Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
I declare a quorum. Next, I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of the planning and zoning building regular meeting, July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation for lot consolidation of one-ten and one-sixteen Florina Court. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion against? Motion carries. Next is the lot consolidation for one-thirty-one, one-thirty-nine, and one-forty-seven Pine Lane. I'll make a motion to...
I'll second a motion to consolidate.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next is the Walter Isman. And I want to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
I second the motion.
Go ahead. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Is there a presentation?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Then hold your questions at the end. Go ahead.
Last meeting you said, "Let them finish the presentation. Let them start the presentation now."
Let's go. Mr. Cage, Director?
Thank you, Chairman. So, briefly, five-ninety-three Welter. This is the... It's a little hard to see, but essentially what this is showing you is the location of the property, which is on the northern side of Welter, at the bend there. And it also unfortunately is the low point of the... Thank you. It's the low point of the neighborhood. So, I think what illustrates that probably clearer than this exhibit is what happens when there's a significant rain event. So, obviously, this is the rear yard of five-ninety-three Welter. This is the homeowner. So, draw your attention to where the homeowner is standing. There currently is an inlet that he has installed, close to where he's standing, where all the water collects. He has a... Let's see, is it the green that is the pointer? Okay. So, the inlet is back here that he has installed. He has, I believe, a two-and-a-half-inch pipe that runs adjacent through his property to the street. Let's just... So, yeah, this is actually a better exhibit. So, this is where the homeowner is standing. He has a two-and-a-half-inch PVC pipe that runs all the way to... Actually, it comes out to the street, to an inlet there that goes into our storm sewer system. Obviously, we can all see that does not address the issue. It's a capacity issue. All these residences here, essentially, the stormwater comes over land into Mr. Himpleman's backyard here at five-ninety-three. So, it's a major issue. Staff... Mr. York and myself did go out and visit with Mr. Himpleman some time ago. We worked with five-ninety-three and his neighbor to the west to get a five-foot easement on each property. Ten feet was judged to be appropriate to perform the work. Essentially, what he needs is an upsized pipe. The neighbors to the west were, I believe it's a rental property, the owners are not interested in participating. So, to address the issue, staff has recommended a five-foot easement on Mr. Himpleman's property. It's not ideal, but it's believed that there's enough space there with easement to do the work. Essentially, what was recommended is... The city engineer recommended an eight-to-ten-inch pipe. Just on the basis of these pictures, I would suggest ten inches probably better. And so, take a ten-inch PVC pipe from the rear inlet, take out the two-and-a-half-inch, and run it to our structure up here at the street. So, that's something that we would do, perform the work in-house through Public Works. And we had a similar situation, I believe, in fourteen. Really, it's a regional issue. The homeowner's exhausted all options on his behalf. And really, this is one of those issues where the homeowner needs some help. And it's really not just the homeowner, because, as you can see from the pictures, it's not just Mr. Himpleman who has the property. So, the flooding does go beyond his property boundaries, and I think this will take an issue, make an instant impact, and hopefully help the neighborhood. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
The easement, how much is this going to cost the city for it? We're going to install this pipe, my understanding, on your presentation here?
Go ahead, Director.
So, to answer your question, yes, the city would perform the work. The city engineer estimated price if we were to use, you know, an outside contractor at about seven-and-a-half thousand dollars approximately. If we were to contract out. Obviously, if it's in-house, it's not going to cost us seven...
What's the estimate of in-house?
That's something I probably want to talk to Mr. York about. It's something we would schedule, obviously. We don't want to... We want to schedule it so we're not impacting other services, you know, whether it's grasscutting, whether it's in the winter, snowplowing, anything like that. So, I think scheduling is key. I know Mr. Himpleman's been waiting some time for this. It's a good solution. I think if the committee's okay with the proposal, obviously, that's something Mr. York and I will discuss about scheduling. But that's something we could update you on in terms of when we will do that, if successful this evening.
I would like to know how much the cost of material is. If we're going to do it in-house, do we have a list of the materials of how much it's going to cost?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's something we can provide.
So, my question here is, you're asking for an easement here. We don't have no prices. We're going to go to council next week on this if it passes. And we have no idea what this is going to cost in any which way.
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
That's a very valid point. The key is... So, one element, obviously, say if it's seven-and-a-half thousand dollars to use a company. Obviously, a big proportion of that is labor. There wouldn't be a labor cost because we'd do it in-house. So, essentially, what we're talking about is the pipe itself and any other materials that we would use. But that's a valid point, and we can bring that back.
Follow-up?
In return with that, Ed, you're saying seventy-five hundred. I'm not going to sit here and say, "Is this price definitely seventy-five hundred?" You don't know if this could go up to ten thousand dollars. You don't know if it could go down to five thousand.
Go ahead, Cage.
Unless we done some recently... And I have a hard time doing easement here and saying, "Okay, yeah, we're going to do it and do the easement," when I don't have even a price of how much is this going to be. Otherwise, I got... We have people in Ward Two, "Oh, let's do an easement here, let's do an easement there." And then we got ten thousand here, ten thousand there, and a hundred thousand by the time you're done.
You're exactly right. These are all valid points. The seven-and-a-half thousand was a cost estimate put together by the city engineer. So, that's based on labor, time, materials. Just on the basis that that would be an outside group constructing it, obviously, the number would be less than that. I think you have a very valid point that we want to get a handle on the cost. I think the key for this project, the easement is one thing. The homeowner has signed an agreement that Attorney Bond put together, saying that he will allow an easement for the city to do the work. So, I think there's two parts. One is to approve the easement, which would allow us the access to install the structure and perform the work. And the other one, which is an excellent point, is how much of a cost is this to the city? And I think what I'm hearing, and I think, which is a valid point, is that let's... I'll sit down with Mr. York, put some numbers together, and bring them back to you so you can get a good handle on that.
One more... I want to follow... One more thing. I don't mind with easement. I just don't want the resident to say, "Okay, yeah, you granted my easement, and now where's my pipe?" I like to have everything... I like to know how much it's going to cost upfront. This way, I don't get that resident's high hopes up right away when I'm voting no and why I'm voting no, or yes. If I'm going to vote yes, I want to go all the way with it because of I know what the price is going to be. And I know how much it's going to cost me, or cost the city, not me.
Chief?
I was just going to say, if this passed out of committee, we could just say that if we don't have the numbers for the packet tomorrow for September one, and we'd leave it off the consent agenda for the first meeting that those numbers are available, and then you could take final action on it.
That's not the point. The point is, I don't want to get a resident's high hope up that may be watching this, and we're going to vote on the easement today, and I don't know what the price is going to be.
Also, we've done this at one-twenty-one Montclair in two thousand and fourteen, so...
What size pipe? How much?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have no problem doing this, but there's a couple of concerns I have. Once we install this pipe, okay, our engineer says this should work, okay? So, what happens? Who's in charge of that pipe after we install it? Is that our pipe for good now, that we have to maintain it? Or, we got the easement, we put the pipe in, and if that pipe collapsed, God forbid, I mean, I'm just drawing out the worst scenario out there, are we going to have to go in there and dig that thing back up and replace it? Or is the city not liable after we install it?
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Excellent point. I think there's two parts to the question and two parts to the answer. One, routine maintenance. Just having met Mr. Himpleman, I know he will perform that work. He's done a considerable amount of work on his own property. In terms of maintenance, making sure the inlet and the outlet are clear, I'm sure he would perform it because it's in his best interest. And seeing the work he's done already on his property, I know for a fact that he would do that. So, regular maintenance, you know, in terms of any blockage, he'll make sure that the, I'm sure, the structures are clear and it's functional. In terms of the pipe itself, if there were a major incident, the pipe failed, that would be a responsibility of the city. We've put it in. It's within an easement. It's our responsibility. Obviously, there's a, you know, there's a life to each PVC pipe that you put in. Really, the key is the installation. You've got to install it on a good, solid base. I mean, which Public Works will do. There is a life to it, but would we be in charge of addressing it if there was a major failure of the pipe or it collapsed? Yes, we would.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Alderman Catalano did say here. This was done on Montclair in Ward One, and that was actually part of the stormwater when we did... The city paid for the study. And from what I remember, I think it cost like fifteen hundred or two thousand. I think it was very similar, where the estimate was like eight thousand or nine thousand to hire it outside, and we just did it in staff, so... And I think even those numbers, we have some idea until it's really done, they're not going to be able to give us an exact number.
Good.
You're exactly right, Alderman Jacob. It's seventy-five hundred is to go outside. Obviously, the number's going to be less than that because we're not paying for labor. I don't want to give you guys a number without doing my homework and talking to Matt. It's a little outside of my expertise in terms of cost and labor and things like that. But in talking to Mr. York prior to the meeting, essentially, it's a very similar project. So, I would expect, unless we're changing any, you know, pipe diameters, I would expect a very similar outcome, which is, this is what we estimated. And the reality is, the cost is a lot lower, probably in the same ballpark.
Alderman Messina?
So, just to... Sorry. Just to reiterate a couple of things. This has been done on Montclair, and it was significantly less for the board. And it was about two thousand when we looked into it, Peter, in the past? What's that? Right.
Excuse me.
Right. So, what I'd like to do is amend the motion. If we could do an up-to amount, if it is up to five thou... Go ahead, Mayor. Sir.
All right. The price is one thing. I know there's other questions. We can get that price by council next week. I would imagine when Matt gets back, they can do some calculations, maybe... Ken, maybe that's what... You know, I don't know if that's your deal or not, so... So, next week, when Matt gets back on Monday, I doubt if it's going to be in the packet tomorrow like the chief said, or it waits a couple of weeks. But next week, and I think there might be some legal questions we're going to need answered as well. Because everybody keeps saying about Montclair, yes, we did it on Montclair, but the reasoning on Montclair was because we did something to the road which caused more water to go over there. There was a different scenario. And again, there's going to be some legal questions we'll need answered.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, so my last point is simply, just if you guys can make sure we document it, if there is some type of agreement we have, so there aren't no more one-offs, like, you know, we always talk about the one-off that we'll be talking about thirty years from now, these agreements. So, do you guys please just make sure you document whatever we do do? And thank you.
Alderman Woods?
On those pictures that you showed, backyard being flooded out, what's the street look like in front?
My understanding, actually, that all the water essentially sits in the backyard in the elliptical shape right there. I think you do have a great difference to the street. My understanding that the flow from the street was in good shape, so I don't think there was any water sitting in the street from what was explained to me. I was not out at this time, so I'm just relaying what the homeowners told me. I think what he has installed with the two-and-a-half-inch pipe, and I know Alderman Wesley mentioned the size of the pipe, so what the city engineer recommended was the eight-to-ten inch. I probably err on the larger side. But I think once... Again, paraphrasing what the homeowner mentioned to Mr. York and myself, once the water gets to the street, there's positive flow, it's going into our system, it's not an issue. So, it's really conveying the water from the rear of the property, which is on Mr. Himpleman's property at five-ninety-three, and some of the neighboring properties, because he has low point, conveying it to the street, getting into our two-foot structure, and getting into the city system, and then it doesn't appear that that's a problem.
What size is the sewer out in the street?
I...
Go ahead.
I... All I had was a two-foot structure in my notes, so I'm not as familiar with what happens at the street and its size.
So, I'm looking at it. Obviously, the guy's got a problem. Obviously, we would, you know, if we can, help the guy out. I'm not quite sure I... A gator, ten inches. In most scenarios, it's six. We don't need to drain it in two seconds. And that's why I was asking about what the issues are in the front. So, we don't want to create some issues either, because that is a sensitive area. And I know that every time that we've talked about flooding before, and that includes any place in DuPage County, we always talk about intrusion into the house, right? Standing water in the backyard is kind of two or three down the road, and how long does that water stand there? So, have we looked at that and addressed that? I mean, because I can see the picture, and you tell me it's a two-inch pipe, but if I went back and took a picture in a half hour, is the water gone? It's not gone. It stays there for a day? Is there a little more history? That's what I'm...
Yeah, he gets the water into his basement, so...
So, he does get the water intruding into the base, so it goes over that window wall?
Right. Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Mr. Himpleman has a two-and-a-half-inch pipe now. How long the water sits there, I do not know. It's been an ongoing problem. This is the solution recommended by the city engineer. You know, obviously, I'm not an engineer. I defer to his expertise. And I think the reality is, you know, not being an engineer, you know, bigger is always better in terms of capacity, from my perspective as a homeowner. Fortunately, we have people a lot smarter than I. And if the magic number is six or eight, I defer to the experts between the city engineer and Mr. York. And I think it's... The bottom line, from my perspective, we have a problem. Obviously, we want to get a handle on costs, you know, from the city standpoint, but we have a problem that one, you know, a couple of homeowners, mainly one, is kind of bearing the responsibility of handling a lot of extra stormwater. We have a chance to address it in a relatively cost-effective way. The attorney's reviewed all the documents that were drafted in terms of the easement. I think this is an opportunity. We want to do the right thing. We want to provide the costs, which we certainly can next week. Obviously, we want to get you that information. But I think this is something that we can do that would actually make an impact on certainly one, if not more, homeowners, and it's something that I think is a good thing. But I understand we want more details on the size of the pipe. We want more details on the cost, and we will provide you that information.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
I'm not against it, but I have a question. Why is his easement... Why is his elevation different than the people on left and right? According to the law, you're not allowed to flood out your neighbor. Did somebody do construction in that area? How long has this been going on?
Go ahead.
In terms of history, I don't have the history on it. Obviously, typically, what we find is that there's a system where, you know, the swales in the back and the side yards to convey the stormwater. Obviously, you know, people do fill in those swales, change grades, build structures, et cetera. I'm going to guess that's the case. I don't have the history, but, I mean, if you go out to the property, you know, his property is exactly where that star is right there, right in, almost in the middle of the elliptical area here. And for whatever reason, he does take the brunt of all the stormwater. And so, it's... You're helping... You would be helping if this was approved, one person. But, I mean, just looking at the pictures, as you can see, it's mainly on his property, but as you can see here, it does go on the neighboring property as well. So, there's... How it got to be that way, I don't know, but it's a problem that I believe the homeowner has exhausted all his options, and he's looking for some help from the city. And I think this is something, perhaps, with all the information provided, this is something we could look into doing.
So, in today's world, if this would have been new construction, do you think the city would make him build a home there because of the elevation of the terrain? Go ahead, Mr.
If it was today, this area would look a lot different. Because, you know, I'm not sure when these homes were built, but obviously, you know, we perform a number of inspections on the property. The property has to be built per plan, per elevation. It's inspected by the city engineer. If it's not at the elevation, we don't sign off on the CO.
Right.
So, I will say, if it was... If these homes were built today, you would have functional swales to get the stormwater from where it is, from, you know, side yards and backyards away from the home and into the structures, which are, in this case, in the street. Or in the backyard, and as Alderman Woods said earlier, that, you know, to have water sitting in your backyard is not the end of the world, and it can sit there for some time because that's what the swales are there for. Some of it is conveyed to the front, to the street, to the stormwater system, the city stormwater system, and some of it is meant to stay in the backyards. And that's not a problem. But the house itself, the whole point of the elevation and the engineering plan is that the house is raised, the water runs away from it into the swales, and is either directed to the front, to the street, or to the back where it remains until it dissipates.
Not in the residence basement?
Not in the residence basement.
Go ahead.
I noticed from just the power lines, that's the older part of Ward Three, because most of Ward Three is underground power. Do we have drainage there now in the back? Is it clogged? There's other problem there?
Go ahead.
Alderman Sizmarsky, there's a... The homeowner has a pretty substantial inlet here, which is right by where he's standing. And it's conveyed from that inlet through a pump and a pipe out to the front of the property to the street. So, there's just too much stormwater in that area to be handled by that capacity pipe when there's a storm.
This homeowner's been dealing with this for who knows how many years, and he actually put a sump pump out there at the inlet. He actually has a pit with a sump pump. And he was proactive in trying to get all that water out, and he can't do it because there's so much water, so... Go ahead, Eugene Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have no problem looking at this at all. There's just some other questions that I could be addressing. Isn't that... Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that where we're doing the whole entire study right now, the drainage? Is that prospecting? Isn't that right off of? No? Okay, so that's the back of the garage? Could you go back to that picture? Or the side garage?
That's...
So, where he's at, is it... Whose garage is that? Okay, so his... So, that... So, the drain would come out, going this way out to the street, right?
Let's hold on one second. Let me... This... So, the proposal would be... This is where the homeowner's standing back here.
Does he have anything in between that? Does he have any bushes or anything?
Between here and...
In between there?
He has... Sorry. He has an existing walkway along here, which is why originally, Mr. York and myself reached out to both homeowners, because we wanted a ten-foot easement. This property owner is not being cooperative, so...
Okay, so... I'm sorry.
So, to answer your question, there's going to be some disruption here. There's going to be some... Within the five feet, some things are going to have to be removed, so that will add, obviously, to the scope of the work. But in talking to Mr. York, even though there's some, you know, there's some materials in there, whether it's the sidewalk adjacent right to the house, some landscape bushes, I would guess that, you know, if the council feels comfortable with the easement and the work, I'm sure Mr. Himpleman would work with us in terms of the disruption, because obviously, it would solve a major problem for him.
So...
Follow-up?
So, what I'm hearing now is there's a sidewalk in that whole stretch, or whatever. It ain't grass, it's a sidewalk or whatever.
So, in the five feet, there is a sidewalk adjacent to the house right here that runs, obviously, front to back. There's no elements back here. I don't believe there's elements back here because the existing pipe runs, essentially, the two-and-a-half-inch pipe runs along here. So, there would be some disruption. Obviously, that's something that will factor into the overall cost, and I'll work with Mr. Rubash and Mr. York to get you those numbers and those details.
Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Ed, you mentioned about a sidewalk. Was there a permit pool for that sidewalk, or was that joined with the house? I mean...
Go ahead.
There's many years that people put in sidewalks and do landscaping or whatever and... Without permits. So, my question is, between the two houses, was there a swell there at one time?
No.
We don't know that because there's a sidewalk.
Go ahead. Yeah, in terms of the history, I don't have the history of the area. It's... We run into this in a number of areas. The newer areas are designed with functional swales. The older areas, maybe there were swales at one time, maybe they've been blocked, maybe they've been regraded. I mean, this area, some of these homes have been around for a number of years, so...
Follow-up?
In return, Ed, when you come back with the price, I would like the price of how much it's going to cost if there's a sidewalk there and he wants us to replace it or whatever. I'd like to know how much that's going to be separately.
That's a valid point, yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Okay, well, let's see. It's only a half hour so far. I guess this is moving very quickly. I just have a question, Ed, if I may please. Have you received any emails, phone calls, or texts regarding this project since the information was given to us Friday?
Go ahead.
The contact I've had on this project has been mainly from the homeowner, checking in with me and vice versa, just essentially because it was some time ago, Mr. York and I were out there. Obviously, we... Obviously, we worked with the neighbor. The neighbor was not interested in working with the city or with his neighbor. So this has taken some time. The neighbor's been in contact with me just to kind of find out the status and where it's at. Obviously, there was some time with the drafting the easement, getting that paperwork. So the main contact that I've received is from Mr. Hempelman at 593.
Go ahead.
You can still go?
Yeah.
My concern was if you had been contacted by any of the council members regarding the easement. Settle down with that, Don.
Go, go ahead.
Not until this evening.
Okay. This package clears, clearly shows a recommendation made by the Public Works and the Community Development to approve what we're looking to do here. I just cannot, for the sake of sanity, other than this man needing water wings that's in this picture, understand why it has to come to this council and go through 30 minutes of debate over questions that could be asked and answered during the week, and decisions could then be made. That's my point. Week after week, does anybody not read this stuff?
Alderman, Alderman Sizmarsky.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this minus the landscaping, let the homeowner...
We have a motion.
We have a motion. In a second.
Who had the motion in a second?
Oliver Catalano, Alderman Jacob, in a second.
Well, can you repeat it? Has it been back and forth? What's the motion?
To approve the wall through, easement, to proceed with it. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Okay, I find it a little offensive what happened today with his comment because simple reason is, we didn't get the presentation that we got today, okay? We get a piece of paper that shows it. We don't get the presentation just because staff recommend, or our staff recommends some of their decisions might not be the right decision either. That's what we get paid to sit up here and listen and see the presentation. There was no presentation done on this project. So I don't think it's right that someone could do that to us.
Another thing is, last committee meeting, I think staff right up, right here, Matt York, did not know about the contract. Sonny, you brought up that point about the contract with him, and he didn't know anything about the contract. So you're saying about us reading the whole packet too, city staff didn't even read the whole contract either. And I'm not going to sit here and argue about city staff, but you're sitting there saying that we read this whole packet. Do we hit some points? We could take at least 10 hours of staff time a week and ask Ed questions, Brad questions, and you know what? They're not going to get anything done. So we do the best we could here, we come up with the educated decision right here, so everyone has all the answers at the same time. Because I get one answer, I might get one answer from Ed, and I might get a different answer from Kelly, because Ed might not be available. So when you're saying talk to city staff and everything, that city staff is not always available.
Okay, so Alderman Sizmarsky and then...
Call the question, call the question, it'll vote.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
That passes. Okay, next is minor UDO text amendments.
I make the motion we approve.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, so we got that clock tower landscaping too. This is a good one. And Director Cage, you want to stop your presentation and can we hold our questions to the end, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So clock tower landscaping should be slash water feature. I know we've discussed this a number of times before. This is an update. I know we talked about this at a prior meeting, and the direction was to bring back some more information, include a water feature. So I have a brief introduction. We have a representative from HR Green here, if we'd like to go into it in more detail. So what we have, and I believe, yeah, okay, so I believe you have the two, so we have Concept Three and Concept Four. I believe you have copies at the DAS, and I have them up on the screen. So Concept Three includes, and we do have, yeah, the 3D rendering, so we have both. We have the plan and the 3D rendering. So Concept Three is more of a formal water feature, obviously surrounding the proposed clock tower. Obviously, HR Green have put in some details there, just, you know, the reference point, obviously, the leaf, the landscaping that's seen on the plan, obviously, a more formal, more structured water feature in Concept Three. Please note, these are the existing utilities boxes that will remain. And then one other key point to note is if we jump back really, yeah, if we jump back really quickly, as a point of reference, we do not have a huge amount of space on the corner because this is the property line. Shorties, obviously, is here. This would be the proposed walkway to connect to the plaza, and obviously, the proposed walkway to what essentially would be the start of Wooddale Road, sorry, the northern part of Wooddale Road. Now, two other lines which are important are, one is the ComEd easement line, which is right here, and one is the right-of-way easement line, which is right here. So obviously, you can see from this, the clock tower, the plaza are on city-owned property, but it's a portion of the path, and some of the landscaping would be over into the easement, so obviously, we would need Metro and we would need ComEd to approve it. So that's Concept Three. Moving forward to Concept Four, main difference here being, essentially, the paths are very similar, location, landscaping fairly similar, some little differences. The main difference being the, what would be the plaza and the water feature just west of the proposed clock tower. I think it's probably best illustrated on the 3D version, obviously, a more natural-looking water feature here. Clock tower remains the same, obviously, the path remains the same, some of the landscaping slightly different, but gives you an idea, flavor of kind of what the proposal, you know, the discussion of the last meeting was to add some water features. These are the two concepts came up from HR Green. Moving forward, I do have some additional pictures, and I'm not sure if the mayor wants to, to handle those.
Where's that one? That's not a...
There's one more picture. Click to the other one too, please. Keep going. And... So Chairman, yeah, these are some pictures. I believe the mayor has some comments on them.
All right. These pictures took over about, I don't know, a year and a half ago now at the flower show down at Navy Pier. One was the vases elevated, both having lights, different colored lights. These continuously run all year long. Same thing with the other one. That one has lights, the lights change colors. The reason I gave these, I sent these to Ed, water feature, we've been talking about a water feature, and yes, it would be nice to have one here. I mean, the one, one of the last options, just a flat pond, I mean, you want to do a water feature, I look at it as, okay, it's nice, but I see mosquitoes harboring there, the water's not moving. The other one, at least, the water is moving, it looks, I mean, the picture looks beautiful. But for the price you're paying for this, you might be able to get something, you know, we're looking for a little more of a wow factor. I mean, this does look nice. Let's relax. The reason I brought it up, you know, water feature, there's different types of water features. The ones that, and I got a ballpark when I was, I just asked those guys, what is some of the setup? Both of them were around 75, 80,000. It was a year and a half ago. We were going to bring it to Streetscape, do a presentation, but we really never had a spot of where to put one, so we never brought it to Streetscape. This was brought up by Alderman Roy Wesley last week, I believe, and it's a great idea, believe me. And Roy, I see I said you had a great idea.
Thank you.
One more time, please.
But the thing is, do we have the room? And if we're spending, and I asked, and I think Ed, you said this is about 75,000, well, we're looking at either one approximately, are we getting the wow feature that we want when we could have some type of, you know, something that looks a little more vibrant? Just an idea, something you guys can think about. I don't even know if we have enough room. Might only be on the one side, like you did Concept Four, wasn't it? So those two water features probably would fit there. The only thing is, and I've said this before, the only problem was, you don't see it from Wooddale Road and Irving Park. It would be ideal to have it on the east side of the plaza there, but you got all the electrical boxes, and then it wouldn't fit. And again, I know we're looking for a wow factor. This is our number-one corner here, and we want it to look good. I mean, Concept Three does look nice, but yeah, okay, you know, spending 75,000, I'd like to get a little more bang for my buck if we could. That was just an opinion.
Alderman Jacob.
After last meeting, one of our staff members, that happens a little in Itasca, and maybe the chief could let us know if this is really a problem or not. They had mentioned to me that Itasca apparently has some kind of water feature somewhere, and people keep putting bubbles in it, so they don't even operate the water feature anymore. Is that, I don't live in Itasca, nor am I exactly familiar with what water feature they were referring to.
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
I'm aware of the water feature in question, and yeah, it, I guess kids do put bubbles. It's more of a round fountain close to the train station, and I've seen it in operation, but I have seen it in, not in operation, and I've questioned why, and maybe that's the reason why, so. It's just north of the tracks. It's a round fountain, has landscaping around it. Fairly familiar with it. It is kind of a, obviously, it's an area where you enter the village and you leave the village on the train, but it is a, you know, it's a place to walk to with children, but obviously, with anything, with any kind of installation, you know, we do run that risk. So that's something to weigh up when we're discussing, you know, whether it's landscaping or water feature, et cetera, is, and I think Alderman Wesley brought this up at a prior meeting, maintenance and just taking care of these facilities. So that's a great point.
Follow up.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with what the mayor said. I mean, I think it looks beautiful, but it doesn't, for the type of money, I mean, it doesn't really give you that big wow factor and take you into account that, what problem I task I have, you know, I hate to put this in there, and then we're not going to have it on because people are putting bubbles in there, it's going to, we're going to have problems there.
Well, we can always put a security camera up too. Alderman Woods?
Number one, I'm sorry to hear about Itasca and their inability to have this thing work, but there's like six of them in Elk Grove, they're always working. They're in Rosemont, they're always working, they're all over, they work. So I'm not too worried about that. As far as the wow factor, we have the tower. We can't build another tower next to the tower, so we want a water feature that's going to supplement and augment what we're already putting there. And enhance the existing design feature. The site isn't that big, so when we were talking about the ponds, because I went to the same show that the mayor went to, we tried putting them on the backside, there really wasn't enough room back there. So I think all things considered, given the design style that we were looking for, the prairie style and keeping with everything that we were doing with the treatment plant, the train station, I think we truly are, for the most part, maxing out what we can do there. Obviously, we could spend six more years and have a design contest, we could come up with some more features, but I personally will make a motion to approve Concept Three.
Second.
Any other questions? Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yeah, not only to back up Alderman Woods' question or rebuttal to Itasca, why do you ask Itasca why they like to turn their swans half-blue and half-white in their gazebo pond also?
Okay, questions? Eugene Wesley, you have a question? Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, do you have a question? No. Okay, there are a roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Stain.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, items to consider for future meetings. Additional city welcome way signage, that's September the 8th, and annexation incentives program direction, September the 8th, and comprehensive plan for requests for proposals, September the 8th, and commercial occupancy, September the 8th, and electric car to be determined, and the Fondailed corridor, that's also to be determined. Any other items of future meetings? Alderman Woods?
I would go to, and I know I'm going to get some dirty looks, but the item we just, the item we just passed with the pipes in the backyard, I'd like to look into, or can we develop a policy for that? Because my fear is, I can tell you right now, I got five people that are going to give me a phone call right off the bat. So I'm for helping, but we have to set some boundaries somewhere, so maybe if staff could, I'm not trying to combine the two, but the second has to be done at some point to start addressing, just like we did, streetlights and speed bumps and stop signs.
Do we need a wow feature?
Sure.
Mayor?
Break through it. Right, according to what Alderman Woods is talking about, some legal questions definitely have come up.
Director?
Yes, I think that's just from the discussion this evening. I think those are very valid points. It's good to have a policy because, you know, then we're being consistent. Consistency is important. We have an issue on one property. Obviously, there'll be interest on other properties, but we have to have a policy, it has to be consistent. So I will sit down with Mr. York and we'll work out a policy, and that's something. We'll talk to the city manager and see what the appropriate time to bring that back to you guys is.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'd like to talk about the overhead doors and possibly on Wooddale Road.
Okay.
On commercial, on commercial property.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
I'd like to have staff give us an update. I got a lot of businesses on Irving Park Road that are affected by the IDOT supposed restructure of, or not restructure, but resurfacing. They're asking when it's going to happen. I don't have an answer for them, so if you can get back to me on that.
Any more questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Can I just ask, this is a simple question. How come we don't have a date on electric car? I mean, to be determined, I mean, how are we going to kick this down?
The, obviously, you can see September the 8th is going to be a busy evening because we have a number of key projects that are time-sensitive, and when I say that, annexation incentive program, we want clear direction on that because we're getting, the good news is, we're getting a lot of people requesting to annex into the city. So that's a clarification point that we need to have sooner than later, and some of these items were, you know, we have a fair amount on our agenda this evening, so that's why some of these were pushed off to September the 8th. why some of these were pushed off to September the eighth. Comprehensive plan RFP is a big one, commercial occupancy, there's a timeframe on that, that we have to, to kind of back into getting it up and running, we have to get it on September. So, believe me, I'm not forgetting about the electric car, it'll be coming to you, and I believe if we, if we get some, just like this evening, you guys have done, you know, moved through the agenda quickly, and we've, we've, you guys have voted on them. If we can do the same on September the eighth, I'll talk to the city manager, and we'll bring the electric vehicle soon thereafter.
What, sorry, I'm gonna do a follow-up. This was a couple of months ready, this been waiting for, okay, since we had this discussion.
So also, on the item A, gets priority over the electric sign, that I understand someone's
going to jump all over me for these signs, but, I mean, come on. I mean, you, you had half the homework done already. I mean, does it take that long to make a decision and bring it?
Chief?
I just think, one of the things when we do, when we meet on Mondays, is we go through all the groups, and what's going on, and there's times that PD might say, hey, can you push that off? You know, try and prioritize everything. It, it happens on a weekly basis, where we kind of try and fill out the meetings, so the meetings, you know, don't extend too far into the night, and, you know, everything can get addressed as needed.
Alderman Messina?
Alderman Catalano reminded me, can we get an update on memory care, please? Can we get an update on memory care next time, please? Thank you.
So what I will do, Monday morning at the staff meeting, what we'll do is, we'll make sure that your concerns were raised, Alderman Wesley. I know it's an items out there, I know it's, we've got some discussion. I, I think we're gonna have a problem moving it to September the eighth, which is why we moved it back. I'm gonna request the city manager, we'll put it on the next agenda after the September the eighth, so we can address those issues.
Mayor?
The memory care, you just want informational, like in a manager's report, right? We don't want another presentation.
No, no.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Right, well, their permit, I think, is done end of December or something.
Correct, Mr. Cage?
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Just when you give us an update on the memory care, I had also asked about the windows, and apparently not all the windows are in yet, and they assured us they would be, so if you could trust that, too.
Absolutely.
They explained it.
Any more questions? Alderman Sisomoski?
They explained why the windows aren't in, that's how they get equipment in and out. Until they're totally done with the project, those, those windows will be put back in, they said. They use it to get stuff in and out, without having to, something won't fit in the elevator.
Okay, any more, any more questions? Any more items for future meetings? No? No? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We adjourn.
Public Health, District Committee, to order, make the minute taker the same people are present, prove the minutes. Make a motion, prove the minutes for January.
Second.
Right? Okay. The minutes?
June.
June? June? I have a motion, do I have a second correction?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report and recommendations. I will make a motion to approve the ordinance, Chapter Four, Article X four, X B one-one of municipal code of the city of Wooddale regarding slithers and canvassing. That will be my motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Adjourns? Uh, Mr. Sisomoski, Mike?
So, I'm reading here, if you're running for office, you have to get a permit? Is that what it says here?
No, this would not apply to political or religious canvassing. It would not apply to those.
The candy bar.
It's a little word, yeah, it's worded a little different, that's why I asked.
Do you have a specific part that I need to look at with the attorney?
Well, I mean, back and forth a couple of times, but if, if you're saying that it's not too, too political party, or city, then I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, there's definitely some.
I know it didn't have a prob, I'm sorry, I know it didn't have a problem before, but just seemed a little differently in wording.
If you want, I can take a look through again, and see if we need to put a, like, an affirmative statement, saying this does not prohibit political and religious.
Right, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
We'll add a sentence like that in there, I'll get some more info.
I agree. I agree to look at. Secondary agree?
Secondary agrees.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, what, what are the hours right now, as far as soliciting? Soliciting?
Sorry, right now, they go from nine AM until nine PM.
Right, so then these are the new hours, from eight to four, then?
Well, no, this would be for the application, would be from eight-thirty to four-thirty. What we're looking to do is, quite honestly, once dark, darkness hits, most of our soliciting problems occur in the summer, when it, when it is lighter later.
Right.
The latest sunset, I think, is about eight-thirty, so in, in the longest part of summer, they could go till nine, which is the current practice, but once the sunset starts getting earlier, it would be thirty minutes after sunset, no more soliciting in the city.
Okay.
Because it really becomes probably a public safety issue after that, that we're concerned about.
So that's gonna be?
That would be, yeah, that would be the new, that would be thirty minutes after sunset.
Okay.
I was just gonna make a comment. Section four point eighteen twelve exemption, that does talk about political campaigning, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, so I think that's addressed in there, four point eighteen twelve.
Just covered.
I'll make sure with the attorney that that's affirmative and I.
Chief, I know we've, Chief, I know we've talked about this numerous times, so thank you for, for bringing it to council. By having the time set that you do, right, so thirty minutes after sunset, does that leave any subjectivity that could then come back to haunt us with litigation down the road?
Well, I, I would say, there is an official sunset time for our area every day. The attorney, we talked about that this, that some other towns are starting to change to times of day. It's not the same for winter as it is for summer. You know, and certainly, if someone's thirty-two minutes afterwards, they're probably meant more with a warning than a immediate citation, but it'll prevent those five PM, you know, winter nights, and they're out there at eight-thirty or nine o'clock at night still soliciting.
But are we, are we, are we inviting more phone calls, right? So what I think is sunset, or maybe just annoyance with somebody versus somebody else on the street, I mean, is that more calls to you guys, that you then have to?
I would say, there could be some more questions, as opposed to a set time, but that's something that we'll, we'll work with our dispatch center to know, you know, about what the time is, and, you know, this time of year, you know, if, if it's seven at night, they just know that it's not gonna be a time. If it's close to it, you know, they're gonna have to check with the watch commander or do something.
Okay.
So, but hopefully, this, it's not a perfect system, but rather than trying to set different hours for every single month, it just seemed to be, there's an official time of sunset for us that, that might work.
Good. Thanks.
Chief, for the sake of simplicity, why couldn't we just, in the winter months, five-thirty, and summer months, or fall, whatever, seven o'clock, and put a time, and, and be done with it?
We could certainly do that, whatever your guys' wish is.
Yeah, I prefer time. I just, there's too much subjectivity with sunset, and I know not to bother you, but, sorry. I just know, people, I know my residents probably call you the most. I just, if they know a time, I just don't want there to be discretion, and then I don't want them to be upset with our officers. It's just if it's six o'clock, then it's six o'clock, and then it's, you know, black and white. They're breaking the rules, and, or the ordinance, and.
Well, I guess I'm open to suggestions. I just wouldn't want to do twelve different time periods, but if we wanted to do April through October, to a certain time period, November to March, another time period, whatever you guys think that appropriate time would be, you know, six during the winter months, and eight during the summer months, I mean.
Could you, could you come back and bring in some times next week?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll rescind my.
Do you mind? You don't get it, that's why, he doesn't know. Eight o'clock, you're gonna get it.
I was just gonna say, I think we're overthinking this. I mean, the forest preserve, everybody uses dawn to dusk, that's kind of a generally accepted practice. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, now we have to remember what time it is, the dispatcher asks, is, are we on summer hours, winter hours? That seems to be more confusing than, than dawn to dusk. And I, don't get me wrong, I know that people are gonna push down below, but they'll push it, whether it's a time or a, a dawn to dusk thing. I, I just think that we're asking for, actually, more phone calls if we try to make it timeframes. My opinion, anyway.
We'll make it work, whatever you guys want.
I'll, I'll go with the majority, but I'm just, giving you my opinion.
I'm gonna rescind my motion until we find out some times, because I guess, sometimes it's, but I need a secondary agreement.
How was that?
Mr. Director?
What am I agreeing to?
Follow-up, what?
I'm withdrawing motion.
I agree.
I was just gonna mention, if, if we're gonna go with definite times, I think six PM, April to September, eight PM, October, or I'm sorry, six PM, October to March, eight PM, April to September, because I can't do an ordinance until we know kind of direction of where you want to go with it. I would, I would think that would be suitable.
Put it in there, write it in there. Represent it to the council on Thursday. Does it even hit?
That's fine, and this, this may be coming back to you September anyways, because there's some other work being done on Chapter Four, so maybe I could just do a little bit more research before we come back to you with the final version, and come back to you in September.
Why don't we just push it all back to September?
That's fine.
And everything else?
Yeah, I'll come with some set times, I have a time.
Okay. So we're gonna push it to September?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind passing it through committee, and then we'll come back with the definite times for the council in September. Is that fine?
If this gets passed.
If this gets passed, is this gonna come, go into effect immediately?
This would go into effect once council approves it, at that level, and then we always give a fifteen-day warning notice for newly enacted legislation, that's one of our policies, so it would be two weeks after that anyways.
So if I understand right, one of the timeframes we said was October to March?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we can really push to, to get this through, I think it'd be important. I know it's really important, at least to our residents, everybody, I'm sure, but October, if we could get this launched, at least it's starting from day one of this, this term?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you got your press?
Yep.
You didn't make a motion to rescind that, and redo it second, just table it, let's staff.
Right.
I will table.
You need to read.
Well, I don't want to table all the way back to the council.
No, but, no, but you have to make a motion between you and the second or to read, rescind the whole thing, and get it back to staff, give it to the committee.
I'll make a motion, table it back this way.
Let's, let's staff.
Not in September.
September.
They're also gonna have the start date, too, right? Start to finish, right?
All right.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a meeting something next week?
We push it back to.
Is it long enough for him to find out that Article Four?
Right.
Is it long enough for him to?
I'm gonna ask him. Hang on, there's a.
There's a sidebar going on, hold on.
Chief, since you want to do the rest of the, the ordinance, September eighth, we already discussed, is a little full, and you have other things you want to bring forward, are you gonna have it ready for, I think, what is it, the twenty-second, you know, what, fifteen, twenty-second?
Well, September eighth is when the community development department's gonna be bringing forth some other stuff on Chapter Four, so we could come back as part of that, to the PZB committee, and just give you the times that we think would be appropriate.
So, so that I'll, towards.
Yeah, can't we just push this to the council meeting, and come back with the options we're asking them for? Right? I don't, I don't wanna, my goal isn't to move this down two months. I, I just wanna, you know, look at what the hours are, and look at the time, and look at what the difference between the two are, and what makes the most sense.
The council.
Could we have it by next week?
The hours, not, not the rest. Yeah, I can have the hours by next, yeah, I'll have it heard them out.
Right. Man, did you get that?
You need a motion, you need a motion to table it next week, right?
Okay. Items considered future, all in favor to table that, to council?
We're gonna table a second.
Do I have a second? All right. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items considered future meeting, fossilized ordinance, revised, resident, September eighth. Okay?
Gotcha.
And now, hopefully, any other items?
Yes, under the Committee of Public Health Safety, something that I would like to be considered at future meetings is taking down that Canadian drug sign on Irving Park Road. I spoke to Mr. Jensen twice, he's telling me that the tenant is in the hospital in Michigan, may be laid up for six to eight months. I don't want to have to bring in the council the dangers of the internet and Canadian drugs, drugs, and what it's doing to our children, so I'd like to have something on this agenda to get that taken down.
Well, how about we do this, work with community development to see if that's appropriate, and if it can be taken down, and if not, if we need to discuss it here, we'll bring it back, but we'll update you if we're able to make progress on it in the meantime, is that fine?
Good, I mean, since Prairie Fest, I've been talking to him about it, and he said he would get it down, but it may have slipped his mind.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Hey, any others? Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Tom, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the, like to call the Public Works Committee to order, let the minute taker show that the same members are present. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, a report and recommendation, approval of a contract with Martine Construction for the Edgburk Lift Station improvements, and the amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy dollars and zero cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. Okay, next items we consider, future meetings, war to phase four design contract award, September eighth, patching program, September eighth, RAA Mancini Mill Road Water Main final payment, to be determined, and Potter Street contract award, to be determined. Is there anything else? Wow, we got a lot of hands. Just never any end to this. Mayor, please.
Ken, probably can't answer this tonight. I've seen in some communities, you know, like right now, we're doing all our sidewalk patches, and squares, whatever you wanna call it. One community I've seen, so I've seen like they grind, ground the corners, which, you know, I'm not sure if that's a good idea, because you're getting rid of the surface, just to level it off. Is that just because they're trying to save money, is that a cheaper way of doing it? I mean, is that really any good?
It's good.
Or is that an option maybe we should look at, or I don't know?
It's good in the interim to eliminate the trip hazard, however, it looks unsightly, and it does, you know, degrade the concrete. I've done it in a previous community. We did it for a year and that was the only year we did it, so.
Okay, that, I didn't think it was a good idea, but, you know, maybe I'm missing something. I figure I'd ask.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
In the past here, could we also see the update on Murray Drive? We have not seen any movement over there for a while now.
Alderman Mike Sussman.
I don't think it falls under public works, but the Veterans Memorial, I haven't seen anything or updated anything on signs or what we're putting on the public, well, public works building, we'll put it on. I didn't know whether we could just keep pushing it out or, I haven't seen anything in the last three months since.
I'll answer, so as far as anything being brought to streetscape, we haven't brought it back to look at it or address anything yet. I think we're looking to, not this month, but next month, bring it back, if I remember correctly in talking to Kelly. Any other questions? Any Alderman Catalano?
The mill, the mill resurfacing, do you know when that's gonna start?
It's the same issues we're having on Murray Road. I'm hopeful in the next week that the contract will be out there. I know he's started to do some work on some of the side streets where he's starting to pull some curb and some sidewalk, but as far as an exact date, I can't keep it there.
Same one? Same contractor?
Same one?
No.
No, it's a different contractor, but it's the same issue. Any more questions? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Like to call the Finance Administration Committee to order, let the minute taker note that the same members are present. I'd like, like to make the motion to approve the minutes for Finance and Administration Committee, regular meeting, July fourteenth, 2016.
Move.
That's my motion. Any, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Report of recommendation, personnel policy change, employment after retirement. Mr. Wilson, would you like to take this? Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Well, you can ask a question now.
Any questions? Alderman R. Wesley. The employment for after retirement in the policy, we, we have two years, correct? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently is stated eighteen months.
So what is if we're elected officials?
Never.
One year after the end of the term of office, or leaving office, one year.
Mr. Wesley? So if you're an employee and you, you gotta wait a year and a half, if you're elected official, you only have to wait a year. So what's the difference? I mean, we are employees, elected officials are employees too. So, and we have to follow by the policy. We take an oath here. Mayor, did, mayor, yeah?
Let him answer first.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. Yeah, this policy, the eighteen months was kind of derived, kind of canvassed a number of different policies on a number of different levels of government, federal, state, local, and eighteen kind of seemed to be the, the sweet spot in all that research, so that's why we went with eighteen. That being said, nobody on staff specifically married to eighteen, so if the consensus is to go to twelve, we go to twelve. If you go to twenty-four, you go to twenty-four. That's just kind of where the sweet spot and kind of the, the median was with all the research that we did.
Alderman Wesley, continue. Other, other towns have a policy? Did you check with Itasca or Benserville or? Mr. Wilson?
Perfectly honest with you, this was largely done by the attorney and a couple other staffers not present tonight, so.
Probably a smart move to do. R. Wesley? Mayor?
Yep. Brad, you said eighteen months. Doesn't the state have something, I thought there's a state law with a year or something, or is that just for state employees or, right?
Mr. Wilson?
I believe those are just the, the state employees.
So, I know that Roy Wesley brought up the, for the elected, so just make everybody eighteen months all the same, or you can't do that?
Mr. Wilson?
You know, I would, I'm not really sure where the year is, if that's in the code and that'd be, I think that's in the code, so we'd have to amend the actual ordinance outlining the, that separation agreement for the elected officials. So, again, we could, but that would be a different ordinance that we'd need to come forward.
Mayor, continue.
The reason I'm asking is I just don't want anybody to say, oh, well, for themselves they get special treatment and for all the other employees they get eighteen months. That's why I was asking. So I, I mean, I'm okay with eighteen months either for both or a year for both. I, whatever, I just, I just don't want to hear the comments. Typical politicians, to be yourselves.
Personally, and I'd like to see it made twelve months instead of the eighteen months. I mean, I think eighteen months might be a little long. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, well, for one, there are two separate issues. One's policy employee, one's an elected official, one's by ordinance, one's by employee policy. They can't be combined. It would be two separate things. I'm okay with making elected officials eighteen months, two years. Five years, never. I, it, it, it doesn't matter to me.
I second that.
The eighteen, the eighteen month for the employee, in this particular case, I would have to agree with the city attorney hundred percent after he did, did his research that eighteen months is a good number. The problem with one year is that it still leaves an opening to manipulate numbers and days and time off and not get that clean break from when somebody's leaving and somebody's starting, to eliminate the, you know, even the illusion of collusion on something like that. So two years is probably a little long. That's why it's settled for eighteen months.
Alderman Sizmarski?
I'll back up. Alderman Woods' reiteration, eighteen, eighteen months is, keeps any Alderman from also setting himself up to work in another field in the city. One year is not...
That'll be a different meeting.
Yeah, we're talking about the city staff right now.
No, we were talking about both.
As Alderman Art Woods just said, that's a different, totally different topic.
If I can, if I can comment. So I, I think part of what he's saying is if, that we come back and we change the ordinance, then we can keep them equal. Eighteen months seems to be a, a good thing. And if we're gonna make that one year, then we're really back with the electeds at one year. And one year really isn't the appropriate amount of time because you can still exert pressure on staff depending on where you're coming from or what's going on, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. Not, not trying to punish anything.
So we're all the same then?
Right, exactly.
So I guess we could put that on future items. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Next, an ordinance authorizing Northern Illinois Gas Company, doing business as Nikor Gas Company, its successors and assigns to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distributing system in, in and through the city of Wooddale, Illinois. I make that motion?
Second.
Any questions?
Got one here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
What, what, what does that do for the residents by having that Nikor gas or, I'm missing something here.
Mr. Wilson?
Not sure I completely understand the question, but I'll do my best and if I'm off base, let me know. The purpose of like this franchise agreement, the one with ComEd, the one with Comcast, is to allow them to put their infrastructure in the city's right of way. So I guess in short, if we don't allow them to put their infrastructure in the city right of way, then nobody could have natural gas in the city of Wooddale.
Or internet.
Or electric or cable or anything like that.
Alderman Sorrentino?
So there's no advantage or disadvantage to a homeowner who may currently have electric that they want to bring in Nikor and they're dealing directly with Nikor? Should they wait and maybe, would, would it benefit them to wait, or is there any difference between going directly to Nikor and having the meter brought in and the gas versus this program here?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I wouldn't believe there would be any difference. This is strictly the infrastructure underground and that's a completely different set of negotiations between the homeowner with Electric Heat and Nikor.
Alderman Messina?
This is just a general question from my knowledge, but I see these agreements. How do we go into these and, and does legal counsel review these to make sure that we're not showing preference towards certain vendors or businesses?
Mr. Wilson?
I know, Mayor and I have talked about it.
You're probably gonna say the same thing.
Okay, I mean, this contract largely was negotiated by a consortium of communities and they had negotiated this over, I think it was probably what, six, seven years, eight years, something like that. And so they kind of went into it trying to get, they, they found that it was tough for them to go in individually, so they went together to go in and en masse to try to get the best deal they could. We weren't part of that consortium for a number of different reasons, but due to the favored nations clause, we get the same benefits that they were able to work out, so.
Okay, good to know we're part of, it's part of a consortium and not, not a one-off agreement, so.
Correct.
Mayor?
Yeah, just to add to that, we were represented through DMMC and all the other municipal courts that thought of this. It took forever, I guess, years.
Couple of questions I had. One, it, it said that this contract expired in 2007. We're in 2016, so I guess my question is, how has this been missed and, I mean? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, per my previous comment, I mean, it took, I think, six, seven, eight years for the consortium to get through all of their works. And then once they got done, then Comcast or Nikor had to agree to everything. And so it's, like I said, we weren't part of it and we didn't feel it was in the city's best interest to try to hammer out our own agreement when communities much larger than us couldn't do it. So we kind of, for lack of a better phrase, kind of set back and let the consortium do all the work. And then again, per the favored nations clause, got the benefits of all their work.
And the only other question I had was the fifty-year term. Is, I know that's what it was before. Is that pretty standard for something like this?
Yeah. My understanding in talking with our representative is that's their standard contract and that's how they like to deal with all the contracts, so, yeah, everybody that I'm aware of has been fifty years.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, vehicle stickers, October thirteenth, new computer technology, October thirteenth, waste removal contract, fall. Anything else? Alderman Woods?
I got a question. Didn't we fix the city stickers? What, what, what do we got to debate on the city stickers?
Mayor?
Again, I, I brought this up last time. You guys asked the same question. Reason I brought this up is Alderman Sorrentino, I brought up a point about seniors having different colors and whatnot. So why not go to a two-year sticker for everybody?
Alderman Woods?
But I, but I asked that question during that whole negotiation thing and we said that wasn't a problem, so now, now it's a problem?
No, I, I thought it was a problem as well. That's why I want to make sure, should fix it.
But I was told by the chief that it would be okay. That's not a problem.
I thought we were doing colors.
Well.
Chief?
My understanding that it wasn't different colors, it had a, a small notation on it, the, the term of it, and I think this is coming now to get ahead of it, so we're not pushing the envelope next May when they're trying to sell them and then deciding on a two-year sticker. So being that that passed in the spring, now they're gonna readdress and look at it to go, all right, do we want to go to a two-year type system? And that's trying to give us some time, I think.
But didn't we just pass that and we decided we, I'm sorry, I can't. Michael thought. And we talked about the color and the two-year thing. I thought we were gonna keep it the same color. There was gonna be the slight notation difference. So then everybody, that solved everybody's problem, I thought.
Mr. Wilson, you?
Yeah, so, a couple of points. I mean, one, that was the direction, but there were some concerns from different parties and whatnot. So this might be more of just reaffirming what we discussed type of thing, or, you know, there may be some other things. So, and also again, to give you an update of how it went as well, because I know there were some concerns as to how it would be received, so it's...
We'll, we'll make sure it's, it's a short discussion. Alderman Sizmarski?
Yeah, Brad, the waste removal contract, I thought there was a September date on there. Now it says fall, that fall could be anywhere between now and end of October. I thought the RFP goes out September. And a contract on the garbage now is September.
Mr. Wilson?
So I think originally, back a few months ago, I think it did say September. However, we kind of reverse engineered the, the dates on that. So I believe the RFP is gonna go out sometime late August, September. Then the results would come back, I think, October, November time. Just reverse engineering from the May first start date with the holiday schedule and whatnot, so.
Sure rebuttal, sure rebuttal. I...
Yeah, go ahead.
As far as waste removal, I thought they don't have to do contracts. They, they don't have to do through council. They can, you guys, our staff is free to do whatever, correct?
No.
Because they're a city entity, a city, city business, or city, city waste. I don't, I think they had to have a closed bid.
We could look. I mean, we've been operating for a number of years and even, that, you know, the, the last one was, was a renewal. Yeah, I mean, I thought the, the direction from the council was to go out and do a, a full-blown bid proposal this time. After the last, where the last contract went, the direction was very clear, you know, to, to do that, so.
That's fine. I just saw other city, another city do it differently and I just asked a question and we were stuck to going out to bid or the city finds somebody that can do it because they don't have the bid on it. It's not bidding.
Mr. Wilson?
It's city purpose.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I think regardless of whether or not that may be true, I think the direction was pretty clear from the diocese to do a sealed bid, so.
I, I think one thing that Alderman Sizmarski said, the fall, could we get a little bit more specific than fall? That does...
Fall now.
That does leave a lot of time there. Could we get some more specific, more specific date than fall?
No, yeah, I know that.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, we'll try to hammer down a better date.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say a contract ends in April and naturally we want to get this done before the budget comes up anyways, so either, either late, mid-December, early January, we should be deciding. And, and the last time, we only had one bid brought to us at the council level, which, which was a joke. I can tell you I voted against it and it was the worst contract we ever did.
Alderman Sizmarski? How do you just put fall? I said, when the contract's up and we go on RFP. And I know it did say September, like Alderman Jacob said, it did say September, now it says just fall.
Well, I think Mr. Wilson said we could get a better date.
Correct.
Do we have anything else to add? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.